For Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. And comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker making loud noises or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-57.9 Penal Code Section 403. At this time I do have one card so I'll go ahead and and have the speaker come up. Dave Cummings?
Afternoon, evening. I've dealt with code enforcement the last year or something like that. Around my home, the area surrounding my home, it's gone down pretty bad. Got a lot of things straightened out. One of them that's a bit more difficult is there's a basketball court out in the street that's there all the time. And folks are out there every couple of days, ten, fifteen adults. And they leave a mess behind, they go through the mailboxes, the mailboxes themselves.
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Could you?
I'm sorry?
Could you move this? Yeah, there.
Not a problem.
That's better.
Anyway, a basketball court adjacent from my home and there's ten to fifteen people out in the street every couple nights, that sort of thing. And they leave behind a mess, they go through the mailboxes, stop traffic. And I've talked to code enforcement in the past year about it. We've got most things taken care of around there, but that one is, it's really an eyesore. There are rocks and bottles and papers left behind each time they go out there and play. So I'm hoping, I stopped by code enforcement earlier today and they said, well, there's two files on those folks already. But this is again, it's been a year or better, so I'm hoping maybe we can do something to help out.
Do we have the address?
Yes, we do have.
No, we have, you have mine. I've got a little note here. I was supposed to read to you and it's got that address on it if I can leave it with.
Yeah, you can leave it in River City.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And someone will be contacting you. Thank you, sir. That was the only card that I have. So may we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have several items this evening, however many of them are related. The first items are on behalf of the city council. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D2. And the facts and circumstances pertaining to that are set forth on the agenda. Item B and C on behalf of the city council are related to items J, K, L, and M on behalf of the airport authority. That is all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D1. Litigation is COMAB versus the airport authority. The case names and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. Item D is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 549-57B, position title is city manager. Item E on behalf of the city council is related to item N on behalf of the airport authority. And that is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D1. The case name and numbers are set forth on the agenda. Items G, H, and I are all real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And the parties and the property locations are all set forth on the agenda as well. To the extent there is reportable action with respect to any of those items, we would report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock meeting.
It is now six o'clock and it's August 1st, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville. And the city council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city is housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had several items on the agenda tonight for closed session, several of which are related items. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D2. And the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the city and items J, K, L, and M on behalf of the airport authority are all related. They are pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D1. The case names and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. Item D is public performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 549-57B, position is city manager. Item E is related on behalf of the city council is related to item N on behalf of the airport authority. That is also existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9 D1. And again, the case name and case number set forth on the agenda. We did not have any closed session on item F. However, we had items G, H, and I, all of which were real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And the property names and locations and negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. We only have one reportable action and it is with respect to item G. The city by a vote of four to zero with councilmember Negretti being absent agreed to approve the sale of a piece of property listed as APN number 3135341-16 to the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority for the purposes of facilitating the widening of Highway 395. And the city has agreed to accept an offer of nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars for a portion of that property equalling approximately seven thousand two hundred and eleven square feet. That is the only reportable action at this time.
Thank you. Now we will have the invocation of the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by board member Elizabeth Payne from Congregation Barmy Bar Shal Mahala. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by our police chief, John Schuler. Please stand.
We pray for all who hold positions of leadership and responsibility in our city and national life. Let your blessing rest upon them and make them responsive to your will so that our nation may be to the world an example of justice and compassion. Deepen our love for our country and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city and nation's welfare. Teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. Cause us to see clearly that the well-being of our city and nation is in the hands of all its citizens. Embow us with a zeal for the cause of liberty in our land and in all lands. And help us always to keep our homes safe from affliction, strife, and war. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we do not have any proclamations. Can I have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda, please?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the written communications or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-57.9 Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We have no appeal hearings. So we move on to public hearings. Our first item, B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and revising the engineering schedule of fees and charges for services originally established by Resolution Number 16-011 to reflect the annual increase in CPI and dash W. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the city council conduct the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 17-049.
At this time I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from anyone that would like to address the council. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And are there any, or is there any comments from council members or questions?
I have.
Go ahead.
So for this item B1, I'd like to know when items such as this Resolution Number 17-049 are available for a public review. That way I have ample time to go over it in advance. And I know that this item was at the city clerk's desk, but I just didn't know that until I got the agenda. So I would like to, in anticipation, know that. That way I don't spend so much time asking questions up here, maybe, or in the back. And also, does the engineering schedule of fees and charges for services affect housing developers, realtors, commercial and industrial stakeholders?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, to answer the question directly, it does have impact on any entity that actually plans to do work within the public right of way. So these are all of the various fees, including plan check review, including permit issuance, including public works inspection, things of those natures. So basically anything in the public right of way associated with either new development or or existing development. Very generally speaking, this item in summary proposes a 2.7% increase to some of the fees. And we've actually included a black line or a marked up version of the current fees versus the proposed fees. And an obvious question would be why not all of the fees increasing by the 2.7%? First, those fees that do increase by 2.7%, that number is coincident with the cost of living increase for the employees as a part of the budgetary process. For those fees that are specifically and only labor oriented is the fees for which we've applied the 2.7. For those that include something more than labor, we have not increased those fees as that would require a separate study to be done.
And then another question, since the maximum fee increases 2.7% in this item on calendar, is it going to be capped until we have a new resolution that supersedes it?
That is correct. So this would be the fees in place until such a time as we brought a new one to replace it, correct?
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Move approval of Resolution Number 17-049.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We move on to item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against granting a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Good Samaritan Transport LLC for a non-emergency medical transportation business. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the city council adopt Resolution Number 17-050 at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from anyone. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And council members, are there any comments or questions? None? Can I have a motion?
Move approval of Resolution 17-050.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the sewer various locations 2017 project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt the notice of exemption for the sewer various locations 2017 project.
Thank you. At this time I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Yes, I have a question. Is this item related to the bid proposal contract award to Southwest Pipeline and the Trenches Corporation? And if that is the case, why are we having a notice of exemption for the sewer's various locations when we haven't approved?
Yes, if you will. And this has kind of been, actually has been brought forward because in previous meetings, we've actually done these in separate meetings. And it did kind of create some confusion to where we were awarding the contract first and then following up with the notice of intent. So what we've done is we've put them both on the same agenda. The reason why they're still under separate item is because the notice of intent is required to be in the form of a public hearing. But it is directly related to item D1, I believe it is. And this is effectively just a precursor. It does qualify for an exemption under SEQA allowing us to actually conduct this work. So that's the purpose for the notice of intent.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I'm not, Brian's not here, so I'm not sure who wants to take this question. I'm the sewer guy on the council. This is a lining process. Says it's going to create a seamless, jointless surface on the inside of the sewer pipe. Pull it through, does it unravel, unroll? I mean, we don't pull the sewer out of the ground and put new lining in it.
So the fun analogy that I've had to describe it is if you imagine, oh gosh, those balloon animals that perhaps a circus clown might do at a birthday party where you got the long balloons. I think the best analogy here is they'll put something as a deflated balloon inside the pipe. They'll actually blow air in through it, actually stretching out, elongating through the pipe. There's a heating process that goes along with it to where that actual balloon epoxies or glues to the outer wall. And that's how you actually get the, 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 and catch it at the other end in a manhole. That part, I'm guessing, maybe they pinch it off. I mean Doug Matthews is probably here. Am I right?
Tractor down there, can you come to the microphone, please?
They'll actually cut it out at the manholes and then they'll run also a tractor down through the sewer where they'll see the indentations for the laterals. And you know, with a little video type machine in the back of a van, they'll reach up with a cutter and cut out those laterals. So.
What's the material?
It's some type of impregnated resin in a liner. I don't know the exact specifics on the liner.
But it's going to extend the life significantly, huh?
Yes, structurally and as far as any infiltration, exfiltration type of things going on. It'll seal it and it'll give it some structural.
Something we might do more than once to lengthen the life of that pipe?
Generally, you put a liner down there once. So generally you'll put it down there once, not more than once. So it's one of the, it's obviously much cheaper than digging it up and putting new line down there. So it's a, it's a very economical way to extend the life of your sewer, to get the integrity back structurally and as far as any leaks that may be in there.
What would be the lifespan of something of this nature?
Some of it, I guess, I don't have the exact on that. I didn't look at that, but at least maybe 20 years or so.
Oh, that's great.
If not longer.
Thank you.
Some of that sewer pipe has been down since what, Jim? When did we start searing Victorville?
We used to have outhouses.
Yeah, I mean, and the pipe has to be in the right condition to line it. I mean.
Basically, in 1947, that was Old Town.
Well, yes. No, it wasn't Old Town. It was State Town.
It was the only town, that's what.
Correction.
What we now know as Old Town. A lot of this work will be done in Old Town.
That's the older pipe down there, for sure, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Learn something every day. Okay, we move on to item B4.
Mayor Garcia, we do need an action on that.
I need action. You're right.
I'll move approval of Resolution.
Second.
It's the notice of exemption. Three.
Notice of exemption.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we move on to item B4, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the service lane, line, service line replacement project area number one. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt the notice of exemption for the service line replacement project area number one.
Thank you. Thank you. I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards. I close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from council members?
Yes. So for this item, is this notice of intent one of the 10 main sewer linings discussed in the award to Borden Escavating? I'm assuming that's the item D one.
This item is a companion with D one, yes, and I'm correcting the statement that I made in the previous item, that was actually D two for the sewer. This project, this notice of exemption, is specifically dealing with service line replacements, so that's the changing out of old plastic with copper service lines.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Your motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B five, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Mojave Drive East Trail Traffic Signal Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council open the public hearing, take any testimony, and reschedule the public hearing to a date to be determined.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public. So this will be continued to a date to be determined? Do we have a date, or we...
We do not at this point. We will...
Terminate date at this time?
We will have to re-notice the public hearing.
Okay.
We should just close the public hearing, and then we'll move on to the next item.
I close the public hearing, and I will be moving on to item B six. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and revising the electric rules, regulations, and rate schedules, tariffs for electric services provided to customers of Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing for resolution number seventeen dash zero four zero and adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero four zero to revise the Victorville Municipal Utility Services service rules, regulations, and rate schedules.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from the public. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or questions by council members?
Yes. My questions are, what's the purpose of the daily charge when there's an already-proposed monthly flat fee?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, that's really the only change in these rules and regs, and actually what we're doing is we're changing the nature of that daily charge and just making it a monthly charge. It's actually intended to make the billing a little bit more easily, but it's not going to be a duplicative charge. It's one charge, just changing it from a daily rate to a monthly rate.
And would you explain the three phases as well?
Three phases?
Yeah, there's three phases. There's phase one, phase two, and phase three.
I'm sorry, council member, can you tell me where you're at?
Did you go for this during review?
Actually, we did not have the opportunity to, and I'm sorry for that. Oh, three-phase power, I'm sorry, I was thinking of a construction project. It's a different type of service requested by a customer at the building.
Okay, so then, these are three phases, because these are coming up in written communications as well, so there's jumping back and forth, so I wasn't clear when I was reading this on my own.
Yeah.
The specificity.
Yeah, in the case of power, you typically are going to run into two different kinds of service, either a single-phase service to a building or a three-phase service, and it's, three-phase service giving you a little bit more efficiency, a little bit more redundancy, but, yeah, not phase in the sense of construction, and that could be confusing, actually just confused me.
Okay, and then, just again, I noticed that this item was out for public review early on, and I'd like to have access to that, so I have some more time to read other agenda items as well. And, so with this one, how long has the director of Public Works, how long was he in charge of VMS, because I know now you're taking over?
I believe the director of Public Works was identified largely as the responsible party, going back to maybe '09, 2010-ish. And our recent transition, I've been asked to be involved in leading that since, I guess, March, April of 2016. So one of the things that we've done, given the change in leadership, is just effectively make the rules and regs compatible with how it's actually being administered. And actually, in 2009, I believe, is when the director of utilities left, and it was split at that time, or soon there, not too long thereafter, toward the maintenance and operation of the utility was in Public Works, and the administration was pulled into the city manager's office a few years ago, and then ultimately, I've asked Mr. Metzler and his staff to take that on.
So since Mr. Metzler is going to be the new designee, is he going to get a pay raise?
No.
And then, looking into Rule 10, Section G, it's, customers assume that there's a 10-day, is that going to include weekends? No obligation for weekends? My question for asking this is, if we give the consumer 10 days, consecutive 10 days, but we're closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it happens to fall on a holiday, we've shortchanged someone that would like to appeal this to city council. So I'm kind of concerned with that, and so I'd like to see the inclusion of phraseology that gives the customer in the commercial and the industrial division a clause that says something to the effect of including non-city business days and government-observed days. I think that's equitable, and that's showing that we're willing to work with our customers.
Which item are you on? I'm sure which...
I'm still on B six, that was Rule 10, Section G.
Ten G.
That would be, is page forty, forty-five. And then, the same thing is with Rule 16A. And the same argument is, what's the purpose of having something when we're not going to be good faith following that kind of law? So I was just concerned for those customers in that regard.
Catching up to you, sixteen...
So Rule 10, Section G, and Rule 16A.
SixteenA has multiple paragraphs, which one are you in?
Ten G. So Rule 10, Section G.
I'm sorry, you were talking about sixteen just a minute ago.
Yeah, and sixteenA, they're both go hand in hand, because it refers back to Rule 10, Section G.
Okay, so just to be clear, your intent is for it to be working days? Am I understanding that correctly?
So I'm just trying to allocate, so if someone out there in the commercial-industrial system believes that they need to appeal to city council, and it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we gave them something on a Thursday, we've shortchanged them already three days because of the weekend, and if we happen to fall on holidays and they're back-to-back, we've shortchanged them even more, so I would like to see an inclusion of a clause that says excluding government-observed holidays and non-city business. That way, if they can get closest to a 10-day that they can get to.
Understood, so...
Madam Mayor, if I may say, I don't believe this is an issue that the council is concerned about, so can we wrap this up?
Can we take a vote on it?
There is no need to take a vote.
To finish with this item, so that staff knows how to proceed, I believe, I'm just not finding it really quickly, but typically in contracts or things like this, days is defined, and usually there's a context of business days. If I understand your intent correctly, we can make sure your intent is preserved. Yeah, while you were looking for it, I was looking for the definitions, and I didn't find a definition of days, so...
All right, thank you.
I believe this is a non-issue, and we're wasting the council's time.
With that, I'm sorry, I still have the floor, council member.
We are wasting time.
I would appreciate that you respect, that's why you're...
This is not a council issue.
This, if I have the floor, I haven't yielded yet, I would kindly respect that you...
This is not a council issue.
You give my time on the floor as a council member.
It's not a council issue.
Thank you for respecting my time.
Not a...
I have no further questions, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B seven, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and revising natural gas rules, regulations, and rates, and rate schedules for natural gas services provided to customers of Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing for resolution number seventeen dash zero four one and adopt resolution numbers seventeen dash zero four one to revise the Victorville Municipal Utility Services natural gas service rules, regulations, and rate schedules.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards. I close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or questions by council members?
Yes. So for B seven, how many responses has the city of Victorville received in terms of the gas service rate schedule? Has there been any feedback?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm not aware of any feedback, affirmative or negative regarding this item. It is subject to public noticing that does go out, and I should have probably started the previous conversation in letting the council know, and even the public for their benefit, that as it relates to this item and the previous item, this is the Victorville Municipal Utility Services. It's not a citywide service, it's actually focused just on two industrial areas, so our customer base is much smaller and certainly doesn't impact the rest of the city. It's customers at the Foxborough Industrial Park, along with customers at the Southern California Logistics Airport, both gas and electric. As we're dealing with this particular item, this item is the natural gas, and would only affect the natural gas customers at SCLA. In this particular case, and the reason why I shared that with you is because we do have a proposed rate increase. It's a very minor rate increase, and it has to do with changes to a public benefit charge. Historically, a public benefit charge has been assessed to customers out there to satisfy certain capital needs. We've actually reduced that over the years, and now that we've got a more aggressive capital improvement program at SCLA to improve its gas pipeline, we've actually identified a need to start bringing that rate back up, so that we have adequate collections to complete later phases of the gas pipeline improvements that you just recently approved at previous meeting.
These rates, both electric and gas, are just, really are just for the few industrial customers that VMS has. It's not citywide.
That's correct. Doesn't affect any of the homeowners in the city. Sixty or sixty-five customers total.
And then, before I proceed with my comments, Andre, as the official parliamentarian, I'm requesting that you keep, help keep order and decorum and professionalism, so whenever you can, please chime in, for, at least for today's date, I'm requesting that you please do that. So I'm going to continue with my questions. So thank you for answering, that was my second question that I was going to ask, but you seemed to answer it. The last question that I have is, the same comment as before with B six, I attempted to add phraseology, and that's the same issue, so we've already discussed that at length, so that would be my last question. Thank you, no further questions.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I believe it's important for everyone to understand that one council member does not direct the city staff. And as far as the way and the format that these resolutions are drawn up, the folks that we do business with are well aware of what are business days. And I prefer that we don't waste the staff's time with phraseology.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
As you said, we do not direct, so I don't see why you're directing anything.
Move approval of resolution number seventeen dash zero four one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B eight, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against calling a special municipal election to seek voter approval of a special tax for public safety. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero five one, which will order the submission of a ballot measure proposing voter adoption of a one-half percent special public safety transactions and use tax, approve ordinance number twenty-three seventy-one to add chapter 3.06 to title three of the Victorville Municipal Code, and impose a special public safety transactions and use tax if two-thirds voter approval is received. Call and give notice of a special municipal election on November 7th, 2017, for qualified electors of the city to consider the ballot measure. Request the County of San Bernardino consolidate the special municipal election with the established consolidated election scheduled for the same date, and authorize and direct the city clerk and the city attorney to perform various associated actions.
And Mayor Garcia, if I might, there's one very slight modification to the staff report that occurs on page four in the penultimate paragraph. The very last line has a provision regarding due date for rebuttals, being August 29th. City staff have determined that there's really no need to do that, so we would like the staff report to just delete the "with rebuttals due by August 29th" provision in your consideration of this item.
Very well. So at this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards, so I close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council members?
Yes, I have a question in regards to this one.
Are you asking for permission?
Yes, I have a question for B eight. Has a proposal ballot measure's wording been approved, as seen on page three?
I'm sorry, I missed the second half of that, could you repeat yourself?
Yeah, so for B eight, I was looking at potential wording. I was wondering, is this the initiation, or is this just a mere proposal?
This would actually call the election, and the question that is in here, in the staff report, is what would appear on the ballot.
Okay, and then, the next question, if half a cent, which is .05%, is levied, and our current sales tax is 7.75%, why does the city have the ability to raise sales tax in Victorville to 8.25%?
State law allows for that, but just for technical reasons, I need to remind the council that a lot of times we refer to it as a sales tax, it's actually a transactions and use tax. The city doesn't have the ability to raise the actual sales tax. What we know of is a 7.75% sales tax is actually a combination of sales tax and transactions and use tax.
Because I was trying to do the math, get 7.75, and then jump up .5. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then, how could a funds be restricted in a general fund with the audit of an independent auditor, if that's what we're going to say is going to be restrictive?
So it actually wouldn't be held in the general fund, it would be held in a special fund for only the purposes as set forth in this agenda item, that being fire and police combined as public safety.
So there was something in the agenda that I read that it would be in a restricted general fund, so that's the same thing as the special fund that you're saying? Because I see general fund as not restricted, but you just put something in front of it and call it restriction.
Correct, it would be restricted by law. It would not be accounted for in the general fund. The general fund is just that, it's general in nature.
Okay, and then I'm interested, who wrote this resolution seven dash zero five one?
City staff wrote it, it was ultimately reviewed and edited back and forth with the city attorney's office as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I have no further questions.
Madam Mayor, I move, jointly move with Mr. Kennedy, that resolution number seventeen oh five one and zip code A be approved, ordinance number, to adopt resolution seventeen oh five one, calling for the special election.
Second.
Is your second?
No.
Oh, second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries with Councilmember Negretti abstaining.
Now we move on to consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, if I can interrupt you for just a moment, there is also an ordinance attached, I just want to check, no, there's not, okay.
There is an ordinance attached, but at this time, all they're doing is approving the form of the ordinance to be submitted to voters.
Just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to... Just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to adopt that separately with the waiving the further reading and all that fun stuff that we love to do.
All right.
But sorry for interrupting.
Okay. We move on to consent calendar. In consent calendar items C one through C seven can be approved with one motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, none opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. We may still be able to make the national item.
Okay, so far.
Written communications, item D one, award of contract to Borden Excavating Inc. The amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the water service line replacement project area number one. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Directors waive an irregularity in the bid, specifically the omission of the total bid amount on the bid proposal submitted by Borden Excavating Inc. And award a contract to Borden Excavating Inc. in the amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars for the water service line replacement project area number one.
Thank you.
Move approval of the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have a comment on D one. I have several questions before that moves to approval or whatever it's going to move to.
Excuse me?
I have comments on item D one before there's an official vote that takes place.
Go ahead.
So before I state that, I'd like to publicly announce what does it mean to abstain according to our municipal code? And it's an abstention in our code is a yes vote. It's not a decision to not to vote. And that's how it's going to be recorded according to our clerk. So I just wanted to make notice of that. So I know a lot of us get confused with that. That's in our municipal code. The next thing is D one. Why were the total bids in number and words of six hundred fifty-seven, the amount omitted for the water services line replacement project for area number one? Do we know that from the applicant?
Can you restate the question?
Yes, for item D one, when the bids were open, there was an incompleteness or an irregularity. And so the actual words were omitted for the water service line replacement bid. There's a letter that was sent on in the response that came back.
I believe it was just an error on the part of the bidder. They didn't write out the words like you would on a check. Something that our purchasing code allows us to take into account an anomaly like that.
So I have quite a lengthy amount on this one because it's the process of how the city works and functions and then how our bidders come in and bid. So the next question is, did Borden Excavating turn in an incomplete bid by not submitting a grand total that was written in words and in numbers? And if this is a requirement of the city, I, it is my opinion that we have due diligence to maintain integrity of the process of bidding to make it a fair and thorough process for every single interested bidder, not excusing or giving anything that would be perceived as a preference of some sort. So I recommend that City Council maintain a fairness and either rebid without waiving any requirements or to vote no on this item.
And I remember this issue better now, being briefed last week. The integrity of the purchasing process and the award of contract in this particular case is intact. The irregular, the irregularity we're talking about involves actually spelling out a total amount. And if you actually looked at the column, all of the individual bid items were actually there. So it was just a function of actually spelling out the total at the bottom, but still effectively the numbers were there. So the bids were received, they were reviewed and verified to be accurate. So the irregularity was just really a clerical error more than anything. Nothing that rose to the level of causing us to believe that the bid wasn't good or we're satisfied.
Okay, and so how many times in the history of this, the city's bidding process has an irregular, irregularity or an informality been waived or rejected by council? Do we have those facts that we know?
I think we have any way to know that at this point.
Okay.
It has happened before, but I don't, we don't have any way to know the number.
Do we know who was involved in the process of tabulating the bid proposals? I know there were three submitted.
We actually don't tabulate them. They are tabulated when they're submitted by the party that submits it.
So we're going to consider Borden Excavating a responsive bidder. What does that term mean?
It means that they had a complete bid.
Okay. Then looking at the bid contingency, which was approximately ten percent, that along with the construction management, another ten percent. So now I'm looking at the bidding process. When a bid is submitted, are we only looking at one portion and then we exclude the bid contingency along with the construction management?
I'm sorry, but I believe that all this needs to be taken up with, with management at a later time so they can give you a lesson on how the bidding process takes place. Obviously, you're not understanding the bidding process.
Obviously, I had the floor and I thank you for interrupting me. According to our own municipal codes, you're continuing to be interruptive. And I would assure you that I'm trying to hold as much decorum and professionalism as you publicly try to humiliate me. However, in this process, I do represent a voice of the community and this is not just my voice. So on behalf of the taxpayers, I'm going to be casting a vote and I want to make sure that my vote is cast depending on how it is that staff is responding to this. I've read every document. So there is no need to continue to chastise me for asking valid questions that the community would have. So like I said, looking at the bid contingency and the construction management, are those included in the bid process? Are they excluded?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, to answer the question, the bidding is apples to apples. In this particular case, we actually bid the line items that comprise the project. The contingency is not something that's bid by the contractors. It's something that we build in for budgetary purposes to make sure that we have adequate funds necessary in case there's issues with design or changes in the field that would require additional improvements that were unforeseen at the time of design or award. So in this particular case, the three bidders all bid the same thing and were decided upon based upon all the same criteria.
So it's my honest understanding that for staff to recommend a waiver of the irregularity in the bidding process, specifically the omission of the total bid amount on the bid proposal by Borden Excavating in an award of the contract to give him in the amount of six hundred fifty-seven, six hundred fifty-seven million, five hundred fifty, fifty-five thousand for the water services line replace project number one may be seen and can be seen as something that could be unjust, something that possibly could be unfavorable for a city's honesty, reputation, but even perhaps as seen as favoritism. As a matter of fact, I did contact the contractor myself and I had a few discussion pieces with him. He is very satisfied, but as he mentioned to me, there could be very few things in a bid is lost. So he was making sure that if that were the case for our city, and I want to make sure that if it is for our city, that next time when I see something like this, there is not a level of micro-managing what I'm seeing. I want to be able to understand that process. So if I need to do it in this platform, it is what I'm going to be doing. Just for, for, I do have several other questions, but I'm going to be respectful of my council members. They have been very patient. I had another full page, but I'm going to go ahead and not ask those questions. So I have no further questions.
Madam Mayor, recommend that we waive the irregularity of the bid since the only irregularity was the totaling of the columns and staff has done that and determined that it's the lowest and best bid and award that bid in the, to Borden Excavation in the amount of six hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars.
Second.
There was a motion by Mr. Cox, a second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Madam Mayor, just, and members of the council, just for clarity on that bid irregularity on the last item that I know is already approved, the bidder did total the columns. The only thing that was missing is after the column is totaled, you get to a number, six five seven, comma, five five five, period, dot, whatever, zero zero. What the bidder did not do was actually write the words, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and no cents, like you would write on the long part of your check. That's the only piece that was missing. The columns were totaled appropriately, competently, and that's the amount that we used.
We respect that decision that was made. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item D two. Award of contract to Southwest Pipeline and Trenchless Corp. in the amount of four hundred and nineteen dollars, seven hundred and, four hundred, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for the sewer main lining at various locations, two thousand seventeen project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council award a contract to Southwest Pipeline and Trenchless Corporation in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars for the sewer main lining at various locations, two thousand seventeen project.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And before I cast my vote, I have the opportunity to make comment and that's my right as a council member. So I will take that opportunity now for item D two. Which are the ten locations?
Are you asking for permission to speak?
Of course.
Well, ask.
I did, but you superseded it. So I figured you gave me the permission. Which ten locations of the main sewers will be worked on? I was trying to look at a visual to all the different items and I didn't see which ten were, maybe a list of some sort. So I was interested because I know it's at the CIP and we didn't get the attachment for the sewer master plan, which is updated in two thousand sixteen. So maybe if I had access to that, possibly.
Yeah.
Is it that?
Page four hundred, my, my page four hundred and seventy-nine seems to have them.
Okay. I didn't understand what that was relevant to.
Yeah, those are little detailed maps of the locations of those lines.
And the last question is, what are the plans to determine the next phases of the planned sewer lining projects? In other words, the information for the sewer master plan, should I go back to that master plan? And if so, can you give me access to that? I don't have that with me, so I have no access.
The master plan, the status, is it complete or are we complete? It is complete, okay. So we can certainly share that with you. It's going to identify a number of public improvements, many of which are actually in the CIP that we just improved. This item and resulting from the camera work that is underway, we are discovering issues out in the field. So certainly there could be additions responding to those camera issues. And I think in large part, the items before you hear are resultant from what we found in the field from the, from the survey crew camering the system.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
And what is your vote, Councilmember Gomez?
For item D two, yes.
Okay, then the motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D three, extension of deadline to develop city's housing properties transferred from the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number CHAS seventeen dash zero zero one, extending the time period for disposition of the city's housing properties transferred from the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency.
Recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And once again, before I have the opportunity to vote, I'm going to make a comment on this one. So with the permission of the mayor, I'm going to go ahead and speak up on this one. What was the appraisal value of item thirty-one, the sale of property to the Victor Elementary School District? And when was this appraisal done?
Hoping Sophie has the answer to that.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're not doing public gifting of funds or anything of that nature.
At this point, it's just an extension. There's not actually sales going through.
Good evening. The transaction that you're referring to was one of the properties that's mentioned in the staff report that has been sold. And then this item is dealing with properties that are to be sold. But the property was sold for the appraised value to the school district.
Okay.
It was six hundred and thirteen thousand, eight oh nine.
And then Sophie, would you be able to provide me with the addresses to the maps attached, those clusters in Old Town? There's a lot of property that we do hold in Old Town Victorville. Looking at the map, it was very difficult for me to decipher where specifically these lands were. So if you look at the map, also, there is a landmark that can be pointed out to be the pinpoint whereabouts buildings and landmark are. But I don't have that visibility in the map. So if you can produce maybe a list of addresses so I know what the city owns in the city of Victorville. I mean, that's important for council members to know what we, what we own in our city, especially Old Town when we're going to revitalization and, and things of that nature.
Sure. We have the list on the staff report and we can, it's by APN, but we can cross-reference the address.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I think there's one more for you. Are the housing functions performed with monies from the housing successors, low, moderate income housing asset fund only, or are there other funds? Is it only one fund for the activities that we're going to be producing to several apartments and buildings that we own?
It's one fund specifically with monies that are generated from the sale of these properties. There's no other, there's no general funds, no grant funds. It's one funding source, the sale of these assets. And there were some loans that were also transferred. And if there are repayments on the loans, then those funds could also be used for housing activities. The two major asset classes that were transferred to the city as the Housing Successor Agency were loans receivable and then physical real property. So that, those are the two funding sources that would fund future activities.
And so if we decided, or if there was a vote not to extend the period of development or its disposition, would the city lose property to other organizations or other agencies? And what would be some of those consequences or advan, or advantages, since I didn't see the pros and cons of this particular item?
If the extension were not granted, we would have to immediately offer all of the properties for sale, a fire sale of sorts, and not be able to strategically seek affordable housing developments that we'd like to see. They would just be sold off to the public.
Okay. So is the city of Victorville planning on keeping these lands? There's a lot of them at forty-six and thirty-six.
There's thirty-four remaining and they're all in the Old Town area. And as part of our larger revitalization of Old Town, once the specific plan amendment that is being finished up is completed, then we will, using those guidelines, seek developers and opportunities and projects for these parcels.
Okay, and then my final question, I was reading in the discussion that there's thirty-six real properties, but I read the list and there's only thirty-five. And then right now with the sell of one, there's only thirty-four. So are we missing one or was it just a clerical error?
The list that showed thirty-five was as of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. And City Council approved it, approved one sale in September of two thousand sixteen. So the list doesn't reflect that last transaction.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions.
And how do you vote on this item, Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we move on to public comments. And I do have some cards.
Madam Mayor, as you call them up, I do want to provide a weather update if I could. I'll be your weatherman tonight. We have clear skies for the rest of at least the next two hours according to AccuWeather. So I would ask politely that public commenters, if you could keep in mind that we have an event outside we'd all like to get to. A lot of you have spoken before. If you want to try to shorten it as much as you can, certainly, the law provides you your three minutes if you choose to take it all.
I'm sorry that we took up so much of the time, but we did intend to be out there, you know. We owe it to the public to be there for them. And we're trying to wrap this up. So the first person is Daniel Polly. After Daniel will be Robert Rodriguez.
Daniel Polly, one one four, one eight Scotch Pine Way. This concerns California Civil Code nineteen forty-two point five. If the lessor retaliates against the leasie because of the exercise by the leasie of his rights or because of his complaint to the appropriate agencies as to the tenantability of a dwelling. And this, the leasie is not in default as a payment of his rent, the lessor may not recover possession of a dwelling in any action or proceeding. Cause the leasing to quit, increase the rent, or decrease any service within a hundred and eighty days. In which, three months was cut short of the hundred and eighty days. The sixty-day notice had eight days cut short. And this was from the neglect of everything that's happened with this property, uh, code enforcement playing the games that they have. And, um, let's see. This happened with both parties. Caldwell Banker, home source in which Civil Code nineteen forty-two point five has broken all of them. I've asked the city council of Victorville three times now for help as a veteran, only to be retaliated against each time I speak at the city hall meeting by the owner and the property management. I am editing all my videos from the past six months that I've taken of the filthiness of the house, the carpets, and all the violations which still stand. I am also putting this towards social media and the news and veterans' social media. Um, right now, as it stands, sixty days trying to throw me to the street. I'm a veteran, and I pay my rent, and I was in hopes that city council would help me. And that's what I have to say, and this is what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Was that, was, was that something in the ci- city code?
No, wouldn't, that would be a landlord, no, that's in the civil code, and it'd be a landlord-tenant dispute that probably is best dealt with in-
Landlord and tenant.
Correct, that, that we have no authority over, and probably something that needs to go before Superior Court.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to start by addressing the Brown Act. Uh, it is up to each and every one to use, especially Blanca Gomez, to pay attention to the speakers. I don't know what she was doing, but she wasn't looking up. She was looking at her monitor or phone or whatever. But, and that is part of the Brown Act. I think you need to remember that. You're in violation of the Brown Act. Uh, I submitted a letter asking each member to write a letter so that we can address Sacramento regarding SB, SB fifty-four, which is sanctuary state. This is what Kevin DeLeon wants to do through Sacramento. Um, another issue that I'd like to discuss is the fact that, uh, it'd be nice if, uh, if Blanca would be able to work with the rest of the city council members instead of addressing every item. And then she's being a hypocrite because she, she's working with La Raza, Chirla, and other group radical anti, uh, racist groups, and she's working with them instead of with the citizens of Victorville. So, I think it's important that you either get on board with the city of Victorville and put your everything else aside as to what you're doing with those groups. And you, you got three choices. Either you join with them, and then you're in violation of your oath of office and the Constitution, because you are gonna be labeled as a, a traitor. Because you're not working with the citizens of this city and the city council. You're working with the groups that are radicals, racist groups. So, it's important that you either work with the group, one or the other, but I think you've ruined your political career. People know where you stand. People know where you're coming from, so it's important that you get on board, or you could be recalled, or hopefully you might end up behind bars because of what you're doing. So, pay attention to what you're doing, because it's, it's important that you do the right thing. Where is your loyalty? Is it to the citizens of the city of Victorville, or is it with La Raza and those other radical racist groups? So, it's up to you. It's your choice. So, do I have much time? Is it, is it over with?
Almost.
Okay, thank you for hearing me out, and, um, I respect you when you do the right thing. So, right now, everyone but Gomez is doing the right thing. Thank you very much. You have a great night.
Thank you. Uh, Robin Ivston, I think I always mispronounce it.
Ivy not here, so she hasn't arrived yet.
Okay, we'll skip her then. Uh, Deanne DeLeon, and after Deanne, it's Kay Pate.
Many places I go, there is always seems to be a pastor who asks, what does, what would Jesus do when we're demonstrating? And so, I looked it up to find out what would Jesus do? And, uh, and it was in Matthew, Matthew twenty-two fifteen to twenty-two. And if you remember reading that, I remember reading it as a child. I remember reading it as, as an adult. And he says, "Follow the law. Whatever Caesar render unto Caesar, whatever is gods render unto gods. That's just plain and simple. Follow the law." And again, Blanca is not following the Brown Act. I'm a student of the Brown Act. I'll be watching you all the time. One of the other things that I noticed that Blanca's been doing is being supported by the ACLU. I have a little poster here. And on the flip side, this is who they're supporting. I have friends who are black, and they'll say, "What happened to us? It's all going to the illegals." The ACLU now is part of something I call, that I've read about. I have a book I've been reading, Maf- uh, Muslim Mafia. And they're thick into this, along with the Brotherhood, the Muslim Brotherhood. And it's not a very good thing to be associated with, even though they're backing you up. I do not think that you'll wanna do this. It's going to hurt your career, because more and more people are finding out what's going on. A young man went into the, um, Muslim Mafia, and as espionage, he got a lot of information and found out who was doing what. If anybody's interested in the book, you can get it at Barnes and Noble. And, um, I think it's about sixteen books at Barnes and Noble. And read it. It's very, very interesting. He was there under espionage and got a lot of their paperwork, and it was supposed to be shredded, and he didn't shred it like he was supposed to do. And it's also in that book, many, many pages of this. So, we want to make sure that you are following our American ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate Pate. After Kate, it will be Mark Ward.
Uh, my name's Kay Pate. I'm a member of the Friends of the Victorville Library. Um, all of you, me, everybody wants something. We always want something. But when you get down to the nitty-gritty of it, do we need what we want? The city of Victorville and the community needs a new library. And put that needs in capitals, bold print, and underscored. This library, whether it be built from ground up, whether it be housed in a building that's empty, whether it be housed in a storefront, whatever it has to be, must be, needs to be, at least fifty thousand square feet. This library needs to be built west of the freeway. It needs to be built near, close to residential areas and schools, which is obvious. And it also needs to be where it's accessible by foot, by vehicle, and by bus transportation. Now, why do we need this library? You've all been to our library, I'm sure. The library, when it was built, the population of Victorville was ten thousand, eight hundred people. The present population of Victorville is a hundred and twenty-two thousand plus. Do the math. When that was built and the population was ten thousand, eight hundred, I'm sure that was fine. It was probably big enough. Now, it's not big enough. When the city took over the library from the county, which I thank you for, they in turn built, or what they did was enclose the atrium, which was on the present library. That room now houses thirty-one computers, which we are very grateful for. But the library part that I refer to, where the books, so on, et cetera, is the same as it is, or was when it was built, when the population here was ten thousand, eight hundred. Now, you can see the need for a new library, but let me tell you about our library.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, but thank you for listening.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Mark?
Hello, uh, Mayor Garcia. My name is Mark Ward. I live at one five five eight two tenth Street in Old Town. I've been there since nineteen eighty-seven. And my cemetery plot is on Eleventh Street. I don't really plan on going anywhere. However, at the, at the rate that the, the council is, I'm hoping unwillingly, or unknowingly, excuse me, um, allowing middle management to run the residential rental rehab, or residential, uh, rental licensing program, um, this has basically turned my life upside down, my investment life. I've been a landlord in Victorville since nineteen eighty-two. I've lived in Victorville since nineteen eighty-seven, and in thirty-five years, I've never been sideways with the city of Victorville, code enforcement, the sheriff's department, or housing authority, anyone else. I've never lost an eviction in court. I've never had, even had habitability change, uh, challenged maybe one time in, in thirty years. I now find my whole life turned upside down, because, uh, instead of one business license, I'm now required to have forty different business licenses, and manage these forty different business licenses on forty different properties. These properties are one by one being snooped on by code enforcement, and they're flunking one by one. And the amount of distress this has caused is, is, is just something beyond the pale. Um, I'm not sure if you're aware of, of what is actually going on, but, uh, it, what it is is very unfair, or the de- the code enforcement has ver- been very derelict in their duty in the last thirty-five years, since I had no problem then. And now, all of a sudden, because I have, have made a few enemies in middle management, in particularly in the development department, um, now it seems like I'm, got a target on my back. City Hall has chosen to deal with some out of, problem out of, out of the area landlords by using a flamethrower on the rest of us that have been here successfully trying to, to scrape by and do business for all these years, and we don't much appreciate it. I was trying to think of an analogy that I could use to, for you to feel how I feel. And I think probably it's the F, the FEC, when you, when they came in and made an attack on the city of Victorville. I'm sure Mr. Ke- Keith is well aware of this. And come in and taken the amount of time and resources, uh, snooped for records, and, and basically turned the city upside down, shaking you like a piggy bank, hoping to get money settlement or whatever. I know this is still pending. Um, so I'm hoping maybe you would see it my way, that we can come to some resolution so that we're not, or some, uh, method, we can, so we're not sideways with each other. The way that I've been operating for thirty or thirty-five years can continue, and that Victorville can return to a business-friendly nature that it was for so many years when Mayor, when, uh, Councilman Cox was the, was the manager of the city. A lot has changed since then, and it has not been in a positive way. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. Yeah, Maggie, you can come up and speak.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. I guess I'm really late coming to the party. I would appreciate you not doing that. Thank you very much. Just off the top of my head, a couple of things. One, about the council meeting, um, approximately a month ago, where, um, it drug on and on until, ah, gosh, I left at eleven PM. Um, Councilman Gomez thought it was either necessary or appropriate, which neither I agree, um, to read at length pages and pages of paperwork that was related to the item. And I had enough time to go to the ARCO, get a cup of coffee to stay awake and come back, and it was still going on. Um, I was not very appreciative of that, and I don't think people that, either on this council or in this forum here, um, appreciate anything of that nature. Um, that's number one. Number two, there was an item on the agenda about, um, a special deduction for a half a percent increase, I assume on property tax, correct me if I'm wrong, to help support the police and the fire, and I stand firmly behind that. I have no problem with that. In past, when we've had, uh, this subject come up, there's been a lot, there's been several people in the audience who have spoken against that, but I don't, I personally don't see any other viable solution. I feel it's something we have to do. It's not something from an economic standpoint, any of us want to do, yet if we don't wanna do it, we cannot cry, whine, and complain that we don't have the cer- the amount of services from the city and, and police and the fire that we would like to have, so I do stand beside, uh, behind that. And the only other thing I wanted to say is, um, I'm sure most people are aware of it. Um, I'm feeling very sad today. Um, the Barstow Sheriff's Department lost a deputy in a plane crash in Big Bear. And young, beautiful, twenty-eight-year-old woman and her fiance, and I have reached out to the captain over there to extend my condolences to him and all the staff. And I hope all of us here would keep this deputy, and her name is Rebecca Joan Raymond, in their thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie, that's a sales tax, not a property tax. A half percent sales tax.
Either way, I can live with it.
Tell your friends.
Okay, that's the last card that I had. Um, so now we will go into our, uh, city managers' report.
Listening to the weather report. It's beautiful outside. Still got two hours of clear weather.
Thank you.
Um, item number E three, discussion and possible ac- oh, I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
No.
Oh, okay. Item E three, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
I have a comment, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
This issue that Mr. Ward brought up has been brought up by several people. I don't think it was the intent of the council that every single unit, even their side by side, have a business license, and I was. I missed something, and if it's not, we should agendize this and, and discuss it. I'm not gonna say correct it, but discuss it, because I don't know what the intent of the rest of the council was, but that was not my intent.
I absolutely agree.
I agree.
Same here. I, somehow, I guess we misunderstood, or- or I don't know what happened, but we did not intend to do that.
Then, can the city council then, by consensus, agree that staff needs to bring that back for discussion and possible amendment? There may be reasons to have multiple licenses. I don't know. But one for every one on that infinite item doesn't make sense. And there may be other issues, but that's the only one that has been brought to my attention over and over.
We have four rentals, and it's an irritant.
But when you have forty, it goes way beyond being an irritant. We need to talk about that. I agree.
So we will bring it back?
Yes.
One else?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to echo Mayor Protem Cox's comments. And just to further on that, it could be the same item coming back to the council. But just from a broader perspective, this city has really gone through a lot since 2009. Not only has the overall community and the economy struggled, the city has struggled. And so, we're not, as a city, back to where we'd like to be. So you can imagine the folks that have encountered some setbacks out their businesses and everything. They were interrupted, basically. Because whenever you do a project, no one takes into account a 10-year hiatus because the economy is just not cooperating and the market fundamentals just aren't back. I think we have some signs of positive activity, which is good. But just from a development activity perspective, I'd like to get an update from our planning department, what's going on, what we can do as a city to revive things. And it might be small things. But fantastic idea today about if you've got 40 units, it's not the same as having one. So that's just one example. And I completely agree, you know. Maybe it's lowering fees. Maybe, you know, there's a number of things that can be done. But as part of a broader issue to hopefully come back, hopefully we have the consensus of the council that we are pro-growth, pro-smart growth, if you want, and we are pro-jobs. So no one would dispute that, I don't believe. But again, I would like to ask the consensus of the council that if they think it's worthwhile, that perhaps we do need to take a relook at things because we all took a punch in the gut for the last 10 years. And I see things going back. So if we can help a business owner, and we have some items that staff would think that we could feasibly do without harming the city, I think I'd like to hear an update. And I hope I have the support of the council.
Me too.
That was the first item. The second item was a, well, you know what? I'll table that. I'm good. Thank you.
I don't have anything to say.
I did mine. Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of items for discussion. The first thing is, I like to see discussion and possible action on a future agenda not too far from tonight, of looking at the floor reserves of the 5%, which, if I'm incorrect, Doug can clarify. But I think we only have four months' worth of reserve. And I think our city needs to look up a little bit more of the floor reserves, not just being 5%. So that would be a discussion item that I'd like to also see on the agenda. The next thing that I'd like to see is technology usage. Many council cities and water departments use technology to be very inclusive of their audience, who's voting, who's making a motion, who's going to comment. And I think that would be very beneficial to begin to include technology and have these projections show you what it is that we're doing up front. Sometimes it may be hard to follow along. Maybe we're not loud enough. And I think we already have that technology available. Now, it's bringing it to the council and us beginning to use it. We can learn. We can be trained. I know I'm already savvy in that. I'm not saying that we all are. But I think that's something for the benefit of the general public that we should bring as a possible action and discussion for not too far away of today's agenda. The next thing is, I've already discussed, but I didn't see it in the agenda. I don't know if it's going to come anytime soon, but we are going to have a special election November 2017. And I would like to see a city clerk as a voted-in position rather than as an appointed position. So that's another item of discussion and possible action that was echoed the last meeting. And I didn't see it this meeting, so I was wondering where that was at. And then, the fourth and last one is, Friends of the Library has a very valid point. Our community is very distressed when we don't have an educated population, very poverty-stricken. So looking at how we can create mobile libraries that are very close to walking distance, to set up a plan like we do with everything else in our cities, we also need to think about our children's minds and how we can help them to create sustainability in the cities that they are living in. And that's a way to help flourish and cement seeds. And so, that would be another item that I would like to see brought up as a discussion and a possible action.
On the third item regarding the election of a city clerk, I don't believe there was consensus to put that on the agenda the last time that it was brought up. So the way the policy works is, each of those items, you need to get a consensus of at least three council members in order for us to put it on the next agenda for discussion.
Well, for all of these votes, instead of me asking for a consensus, I usually ask for a formal vote because that way, we can see where we are leading. This is not me talking my head off what I want to do as a voice for all of us that represent a community. We have vested interests in the community. So I always seek for not just a consensus because it goes nowhere. There's low voices. You don't get anything. So a formal vote says either yes, or it says a no, and it's very loud and clear. So when I hear that yes or no, I don't have to keep bringing it again and again unless more constituents come up to the audience and say, "This is what we like," then I become, or we all become, one of their voices. So for each of these items, I don't know if I'm going to do a separate vote, but I make a motion for the first one to have discussion and possible action on looking at the floor reserves of a 5%, which is currently a four-month reserve to look into more for the next possible agenda. So I made a motion.
Take action on an item that is not agendaized?
On this, you can take a motion just, yeah, this is just to add it to the agenda. She's made a motion. So if there's a second, they can have a vote on whether you want to put it on a future agenda.
Essentially, she's asking to formalize the consensus.
Right.
The policy just calls for consensus. Certainly, it's at the discretion of the council, the mayor, if you wanted to make it more formal than what the policy is saying. But the policy actually says consensus.
I have a question on 5% increase. What 5%?
Floor reserves of 5% that the city currently holds.
What's the policy, Mr.?
Our policy has a goal of 15% reserves and a floor of 5%.
Can we just deal with one of these at a time? We've got four different things we want to do.
I have a question. You know, we're going to raise 5%, but I knew it wasn't 5%. I wanted clarification. The floor is 5%. The policy is to reach 15%. Okay? So I just wanted to clarify that.
So there's a motion to decide whether you want to put that on a future agenda?
Which, what?
To look at the 5% floor.
Is that the motion? Or is it the city clerk that's the motion?
No, that's the motion, as I understand it.
If there is no second, then the motion dies.
And the second item was technology usage to implement at the dais for effective inclusion of what it is that's happening at the dais and to be inclusive of our audience. And that's the motion that I'm making for a formal vote as well.
I couldn't understand what you said.
Yeah, so we use technology to be able to include what it is that we're motioning or are votes. And they usually appear up here. But we haven't had this for quite a while. So I'm trying to include the audience as to what it is that we're doing so they can follow along. And technology usage seems to be something that can be effective as we move forward.
And we change it because?
Problems with it.
It was the vote only.
Yeah, there was, well, I think it was a desire of the council at that time, actually, to just go back to the voice votes and the cost of it. It is an extra cost to do that, but...
Because the agendas are available. Anybody who wants to follow along can follow along.
Yes.
Genders are?
Additional costs to taxpayers.
So if there is no second, then the motion dies.
And then, the third item was city clerk, not an appointed position, but a position that the audience and the constituents that are voting can actually vote for our city clerk since Carol Lee is getting ready to retire not too soon from now. And that's a motion that I'm making as well to appear for a discussion and a possible action for the next, the earliest possible agendized item.
Is there a second to Ms. Gomez's motion? There's no second, the motion dies.
And then, the final one is the discussion of the library, creating plans and some kind of accommodation.
Are we over the five minutes?
That is on the next item.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. We don't have a limit on this. It's only on comments. So it would be, it would behoove all of us to be...
Just continue, please.
Know what our policies are so that we don't interrupt when we have the floor and also know what's happening at the dais.
Just continue.
And so, that's really important. Thank you for not interrupting me, Mayor. I'm sure you're very aware of a lot of our municipal codes. The last one was discussion of library and possible plans to accommodate our communities. The ladies just left. Sometimes it's important to have the audience so that they see how we are trying to advocate for the needs and how some of our priorities are not there. But that's another action and possible discussion for the next agenda item that I like to see. And so, I make that motion as well.
I'm going to second that motion. And I didn't hear all the details. What I would like is to have a staff report come back and tell us what our best thinking to date is on a second library. We've been talking about this for several years. I'd like to get an update on that. Any dollar we spend on libraries, a dollar we're not going to spend on law enforcement because it's all junk. That doesn't mean we shouldn't spend the money on library. I'm not suggesting that. But those are the kind of trade-offs we deal with. But I would just like to get an update on where we think, what we think our options are. That's what I would support to go on the agenda.
That sounds like it's a modification, Blanca, to your motion. Are you good with that?
I am.
I agree.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Did everyone have their opportunity on item E3? If you did, I'll move on to E4. Well, everyone got a little bit out of sequence here, but there's nothing else. I make the motion that we adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.